This is the April 25 meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We'll get right into the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? Giving none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. So voted. Next item in business is to review and approve the minutes of the March 28th and the April 11th meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? Giving none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. So voted. The next item on the agenda is announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement this evening. So as we know from this very full room, tonight is a really special occasion. It is after 30 years of service, Mo DiPaolo's final meeting as a member of this board. And there is quite a crowd here tonight to honor you and to wish you well and to thank you for your incredible record of public service. And so there are a few people that have some special things to present to you and to say to you. And so we're going to start and just ask people to maybe come up to the podium so that people at home can also hear. But we're going to start with our former Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito, who's somewhere in the crowd. There you are.
Mr. Chairman, I can say that for all night long. You can say that as many times as you want, right? It's wonderful to be in this room back here. This was not the first room, though, that I sat on a board with Mo DiPaolo. It actually started in the original building just down the hall. And so as I come here tonight, I feel very nostalgic. So I think, given this crowd, we're going to do a little walk down memory lane, maybe? Do you have a few minutes in the agenda for this? You might need more than a few minutes. It's 30 years.
I would make.
Let me just start by saying a few things. First, the original, the board that I joined 28 years ago will be May 1, 1995. And it's with Laurie. Laurie here? Laurie, please stand. Donna O'Connor. Bruce Card. Mo DiPaolo and I was the newbie on the board. I had a great board to be onboarding to my first elected office, too. And I was also schooled in the Dick Carney School of Municipal Government. So a lot of nodding heads in this room because he was a giant among municipal leaders. And what I felt when I stepped into office, and I know that you felt this two years before I did, is that enormous sense of responsibility about being a part of Shrewsbury and municipal government here, knowing that you had someone like Dick Carney and the reputation that Shrewsbury had earned around being a great place to live because they have great services, a great team of people in the municipal employees that were part of delivering those services, and sort of the state-of-the-art, best practices, the innovations of the time to do it the best. And so being on that board was a great honor. I learned so much from all of you, so I wanted to thank you for that. Now, I didn't know when I left office after three years that my friend Mo would stay on for a lot longer than he did. And so I was thinking about, why do people do this work? Well, first and foremost, the people who serve in municipal government, from public safety to DPW to the school departments and the classrooms, and they're the people that get up every day and do these jobs to deliver good service so that people have a good quality of life. And then you think about all of the people who are now campaigning and like finding time in elections to want to be on these boards, to be elected, or to seek out an appointment to a board and also want to serve. And that's the Mo DiPaolo side of the equation. And so municipal government is very unique because you have people who have come to work as their profession, and then you have a whole body of people that come to volunteer. And the volunteer corps among municipal government is very strong and very powerful and very important. It can be very disruptive as well. And so it's incredibly important that you have people who are professional and dedicated and motivated by the right reasons to want to be on a select board, a finance committee, a school board, a planning board, a conservation commission, a Selco board, because they're making decisions that directly impact the quality of life for the people you serve. And so when I was thinking about Mo DiPaolo and what motivated him 30 years ago, I couldn't help but think that you are a third generation, now fourth and fifth generation, Barbara. More generations of DiPaolos in this community. But your father and your grandfather were deeply rooted in this community. And so you were brought up in a way that you knew you wanted to give back. And so when we honor someone like Mo DiPaolo, we honor people who just want to give back to a community that was good to them and to come with an honest, genuine, sincere intention around their work, knowing that's a tremendous amount of sacrifice and time away from family at night. Your grocery store stops don't take 30 minutes, they take hours. And your sideline visits with your family watching a game for your grandson or your grandchild or your daughter or son isn't exactly the same as maybe someone else. And that you give a lot of sacrifice to do this work because it's important. And so, Mo DiPaolo, thank you for your incredible service to this community, to this region of our Commonwealth, to public service in this Commonwealth. And what I hope tonight, when people think of your name and they think of 30 years, they think of why you were inspired to start in the first place and that many, many more people need to think about how to get involved in their community to serve on a board, just go up and knock on the town manager's door and say, I'm here to help. I want to support this community. And so thank you for your service. Thank you for the hard decisions that you've made along the way because every single decision you make comes with people that are happy and people that are not so happy. And then to roll into the next decision to make from that is admirable. And so you have a lot to be proud of. And I am very proud that 28 years ago, I got to start my service with you. Congratulations. And apparently, on the first day of January in 2023, Charlie Baker and I thought it was a really good idea to honor you for your 30 years of service, although tonight is your final service as a member of this incredible board of selectmen in the great town of Shrewsbury that I will always call home and always be very proud of. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have a few more. Hope you're ready, Mo. I'd like to invite our Senator Michael Moore, please, to come and join us.
Good evening. It's great to be here. Actually, Mo, I didn't realize how many years I've, how many years I actually have known you until tonight. Looking at this, realizing that you've been on for 30 years, that basically half of your term, I've had the opportunity to work with you on this capacity. So I want to thank you for all your years of service. And you know, to go along with what the Lieutenant Governor said about community service and, you know, we have a hard time getting people to run for office today. You know, they subject themselves to a lot of attacks from the public and I think a lot of misunderstanding in public service. And you've been someone for 30 years that has put himself out in the community. You come here, you make some tough votes, which doesn't always make people happy. And it's hard. It's hard to do that. But you do it with your respect for the town and you want to see the town do well. And if you think back through over these 30 years, what you've actually had your fingerprints on in the town, how it's grown over this past 30 years, and also, you know, that you've been, you can consider yourself a mentor to many people who have seen you in office and seen you in this capacity, making these votes and taking these tough positions. And I just want to thank you for your service. It really speaks well of you that you've committed yourself to the town and the people of this community for so many years. In recognition of that, I have for you from the State Senate, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Maurice Mo DiPaolo in recognition of your 30 years of public service with appreciation for your dedication to the residents and businesses as you step down from the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof to the Attorney General by the clerk and signed by the Senate President Karen Spilker and myself. And again, it's been great knowing you and working with you and thank you for all you've done for the community.
Our State Representative Hannah Kane is at the State House this evening working on the state budget. And so she sent her husband Jim, who also served with Mo, to present something from this House of Representatives.
Good evening, Mo. A couple of personal things first. I got the chance to serve with you. Sometimes it felt like for you. Several terms. And I got to tell you a couple of things I'll just touch on amongst the myriad that are out there. You looked at every agenda that I had worked with you with the same level of excitement and interest and an inquisitive nature from my first meeting to my last meeting. And I think that says a lot about you and how you cared about this town as your hometown. Secondly, and this is one of those boring things that people don't always notice, but you may recall that we did the targeted zoning committee together how many years ago now? And looked across town under the post office, the underlying zoning, and various other spots, and worked with the planning board, the ZBA, and the bureaucracy at Town Hall, and took a whole host of zoning changes to town meeting. Every one was adopted unanimously. And again, that gets back to the level of excitement and interest and commitment that you demonstrated in researching deeds and researching the history of various parcels that really contributed and I think prepares this town for an even brighter future. So as a taxpayer, I want to thank you for that commitment that you demonstrated through your 73 years of service. What I have here, as you know, Hannah's in Boston with the House Budget. So do you want me to read this, Mo?
It's up to you, Jim.
Okay. Anytime I can hear my voice, you know the chance I'm going to take. Be it hereby known to all that Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Selectman Mo DiPaolo. It got small. In recognition of your dedicated public service as a 30-year member of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen, thank you for your steadfast leadership, thoughtful approach, fiscal prudence, and enthusiastic commitment to helping people in our community. Your focus on capital improvements and zoning changes will leave a visible long-term impact and benefit generations to come. Congratulations. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 25th day of April 2023, signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and State Representative Hannah Kane. Here we go, buddy. I missed Parker with you. I'm sure I'll see you around.
Oh, yeah.
Anytime.
I'd like to invite Mo's son, Paul DiPaolo.
Thank you. So in 1993, I was in eighth grade in what is now Oak Middle School. And in the school musical, which was Peter Pan, Mr. Chairman purchased the front inside cover and put a family portrait there.
Oh, my God.
It was promiscizing, but I moved on. And as you know, I haven't broken the cycle. I've paid it forward to my daughters, who now appear in various campaign materials. But as the Lieutenant Governor and Senator and Mr. Moderator Jim Kane said, working in this role, I do understand now the difficulty of the decision-making, and you're not going to please everyone, and you've served with integrity the entire time. And for myself and for every other public servant, I think you've been an incredible model for your dedication to doing what's right, no matter what. So I'm here tonight to present to you.
Not that picture, I hope.
I didn't put that much work into it. But Maurice DiPaolo, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I'm pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your 30 years of dedicated service to the Board of Selectmen for the town of Shrewsbury, signed by Governor Maury Healy and Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know a member from the school committee is planning to make remarks, or Dr. Sawyer, one of them, or both, or all. Okay.
Sandy has a much longer tenure with you, Mo. On behalf of the school committee, we had to come tonight to just express the membership that you have had and the leadership you have had for our schools. You're here to represent the whole town, but our schools have often had a troubled past at times. But you've always been there and always been in our corner recently and for the long haul. And so we just really want to appreciate you and thank you. We didn't make a citation. We should have. I didn't know that was, that was the course. But, Mo, from the bottom of our hearts, we really are so appreciative and wish you all the best. So thank you.
Hi, Mo. As I was thinking about what I wanted to say tonight, I was thinking about how long we've known each other. And the first time that I met you, probably in a role that wasn't as a select board member, was when I went to your family pool and spa store and I had my daughter with me, and she was very young. And at that time, Disney Little Mermaid was her favorite movie, and she thought she was Ariel, and that's all we heard about. So we go to your store, and there was this little bird bath with a mermaid on it. She's like, oh, I need it. I want it. I'm like, yeah, I'm buying pool chemicals. No, maybe we'll come back later. All parents have been through this. And the next thing I knew, Mo turned, picked it up, it was little, picked it up, handed it to her, and said, here, take this. I want you to take it home. And I always remember that, and we still put it out around our pool. It's still there. And it's one of those things, when I think of you, Mo, you always offer to help people. That is the, you're the first one who always reaches out and says, what can I do for you? How can I help you? And I think that's such a great characteristic to have, not only in your role as the, on a select board, but just in this community. And that's always really resonated with me because you're always the first to offer help. And you've done this for 30 years. It's a long time. And anyone who has served or run for public office knows it's a tremendous amount of work. And these are the public-facing meetings. There's a ton of work that goes on behind the scenes. And I'm sure your family didn't see you for a lot of things that they might have wanted you to be home with, but you are always here representing this community. And we have all benefited by the time and talent that you've provided to the community over such a long period of time. And you've remained steadfast in that commitment to making sure that the lives of everybody here really is the best that it can be. And another thing that I really remembered was around 2005, 2006. There was a group of citizens, they got together, and they were really discussing issues with municipal and school budgets. And they wanted to know what could happen. And at that time, I had no desire to do anything in a political realm. And somebody at work said, come, join this group. And the next thing I knew, we were meeting with you at Panera. And you helped us understand what to do if a proposition two and a half would be put on the annual ballot, what it meant for the community, what it meant for taxpayers, and helped us as, to be better informed citizens to move it forward. And you really reached out to make sure that we understood what we were thinking we wanted to do as a community and a group of citizens. And that will always resonate with me because it's, again, you take the time to reach out and help everyone. So on behalf of the school committee and myself, just as someone who's known you for a long time, we're not always agreeing on the same side of an issue, but we could always discuss it. We could always agree to disagree and still remain colleagues and friends. So I appreciate all that work. And I just really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart because you've made this town a better place for me and for my family and everybody else to live. So thank you, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mo. On behalf of the school department, everybody who works within it, I want to thank you for your service. I can't help but recognize that your wife Barbara, I had the great pleasure of working with her when I was the principal at Oak Middle School. And she was a science teacher there for many years at the middle school level. Your son Paul, of course, before I became superintendent, I know was teaching at the high school in one part of his career phases. And anytime I interacted with you ever, whether when I was a building principal or as superintendent, your deep care for what happened in our schools was always incredibly apparent. To think about what's changed in our community for our schools over the past 30 years in terms of the buildings, the new high school, Floral Street School before that, of course, a new Sherwood Middle School, Parker Road Pre-School, now the new Beal School. You've been there along the way, supporting those capital investments. But I think what always came through for me is that you cared even more deeply for the people within those buildings, whether those were the educators and especially the children. And so your leadership as a member of the Board of Selectmen and Select Board over time has made our community a better place and both as the superintendent representing our schools, but also as someone who came to Shrewsbury in 1997 to live and raise my family here. As has been stated so many times this evening, your leadership has made a difference to make this a community where families make mine and others have been able to thrive. So thank you for your service. And on behalf of all the children, all the staff in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, thank you so much for your service and congratulations. And one more, one more brief thing. We also, Dr. Anthony Bentis here this evening, who was my predecessor, who you worked with for many years. And I believe when you started, it was Dr. Collins who was the superintendent.
Yes.
The late Dr. Collins. And we've had, been fortunate to have a lot of stability. For my sake, I hope that continues for some time going forward. But to serve with, you know, multiple leaders over time, we really appreciate that. And we're, again, glad to honor you this evening. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call up Christine Maori, who is the Executive Director of Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services.
Hi, Mo. So I think we can all agree that mental health is having a moment right now, right? Everybody's talking about it. It's impacting literally everybody. But long before COVID and long before mental health being in the spotlight that it's in now, Mo, in the eight years that I've been with the agency, you have worked tirelessly to advocate on our behalf, not only for the clients that we serve, but your advocacy in removing barriers to treatment that so many families in our community face, whether it's financial or transportation or whatever it is. Our relationship with the town is what it is today largely because of your advocacy and your hard, tireless work. And not only for the people in the community that we serve, but for me and my staff. And so we are eternally grateful to you for the, gosh, countless coffees and lunches you and I have shared over the years, for your authenticity, for your willingness to be vulnerable with me, for the friendship that you and I have developed over the years. I'm eternally grateful. And I also don't have a citation or anything to give you but my gratitude and the gratitude of all of our clients and staff as well. So thank you so much for your work, and I look forward to continuing those coffees with you.
Is John LeBeau around somewhere? Oh, here we are. Are you looking? He has some Mo stats to share.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, full disclosure, Mo and I are proud graduates of Shrewsbury High, class of '72 together. So we've known each other for a long time. Actually, our wives were very, very close, I mean, way back in the day, as they say. So we know some things. You know, if anybody watching tonight says, so, you know, 30 years, what did this guy do? I'd say, drive around Shrewsbury. There's nothing in this town that this government provides that he hasn't touched. Whether, he loves public works. Oh, my God. Every detail of construction that I never wanted to know about, he would teach me about. But everything, education, public safety, public works, everything we do in this town, every road you drive in, when you drink your water, Mo DiPaolo's fingerprints are all over it. So I think people should just understand all the time and effort that went in to him putting those fingerprints on the work that's gone on the last 30 years. But Mo DiPaolo, over 30 years, has established, I guess, some records, so to speak. Mo has served, since we changed this government in 1954 to a five-member Board of Selectmen, he's served with 17 other selectmen. No one has served with close to that many. The next closest is 13. Of the 17 people that Mo served as colleagues with, 14 are in the room tonight. And we know Jim McCaffrey is here in spirit. So I think it's a tribute to you that so many of your former colleagues, going right back to year one, are here with you. And if I could presume that maybe when there's a little break before they all leave, you could get a picture of you with your fellow colleagues and your former town manager and your present town manager as well. But I think that's remarkable, that 14 of us are here tonight. Mo served, I have the distinction of serving the longest with Mo. My entire time as a selectman, 24 years is with Mo. I understand I'll be getting an award for that at another time. Next longest serving would be Bruce at 15 years, and then Jim and Moira both served 12 years with Mo. Mo DiPaolo has been chairman of the Board of Selectmen 10 times in those 30 years. He isn't first, though, and I do have to give you a little footnote. Mo did 10 times over 30 years. The late, great Jim Dunnehy did 13 terms as chair in 13 years. 13 consecutive years as chair. But Mo is strongly in second place. The next guy after him is way back in five. He also served as vice chair for five years. He was clerk for five, for four years. So for 19 of his 30 years, he was in board leadership. He's served with seven of the eight female members of the board since 1954. And, Mo, in the 10 elections you were in, 23,402 people went into a ballot box and checked off the name of Maurice DiPaolo, who they wanted to be their selectman. They did it the first time, and they came back nine more times. And I know if they had the opportunity to do it again, they'd probably do it again. Mo has served only twice since 1954, is the same six people sat together on a board, the same five people sat together on a board for six years. And Mo has the distinction of serving on, of course, those, both of those two boards. So your longevity is remarkable, but it's what you achieved over those years that is, is your legacy, and the town of Shrewsbury deserves to be very grateful for all you've done. Thank you very much.
Okay. Before I turn it over to our board, have I missed anyone? I think I got everybody. Okay. So just a few minutes for us to tell you what we think, Mo, and honor you. I'll, I can start with you, Kevin.
Sure. You know, from my perspective, Select Board members always are very visible in their own communities that they work in. But rarely do they have visibility beyond kind of their own borders out into other communities. However, I'm sure it doesn't surprise anyone in this room that Mo DiPaolo was a name that I knew way before I came to Shrewsbury because of the work. to Shrewsbury because of the work that he's done directly for this local government, through his former role serving on regional entities like CMRPC, and the initiatives that he's worked on for them. But also informally, because of the initiatives that he's orchestrated here for Shrewsbury, and, you know, pretty much everything that the Lieutenant Governor so eloquently said about what Shrewsbury is, that feeling that you have in this room this evening about what it means to work and be a part of this community. It's just phenomenal. So, you know, Mo, along with Moira Miller and Donna O'Connor, were the lead interview panel for the town manager selection. From that evening, he was my main point of contact through my job offer and signing my contract and my employment agreement. So I walked into the interview panel knowing about Mo DiPaolo, and I walked out of that process, you know, feeling part of this community. And he's welcomed me here, and there's not a better feeling in the world than that. So from those first conversations with Mo, through our final formal weekly meeting just this week, what has been most profound to me is that Mo really understands the relationship between an elected official and a professional manager. And I'm sure, you know, I'm speaking for Mr. Morgado on this as well. He's provided so much support, so much guidance, so much assistance, and really got me up to speed to learn what it was to be here in Shrewsbury. That deep understanding of that healthy relationship really benefited me, really made me a better town manager, also required me to up my game many times. Mo knows how to leverage that perspective, his position and his experience to get things done. He certainly knows how to dig deeper into any issue than anyone else I've ever worked with. And it's nearly impossible to dig deeper than him on those areas he's really passionate about, like affordable housing, most of the things DPW, like Mr. LeBeau said. So it was hard to question Mo when he brought an issue to me. I know he already knew the answer, but it was, it was a lot of fun working with you. So I appreciate all that you've done for me. I appreciate the time that you've spent with me to mentor me. It's truly been a blessing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. So I've had the tremendous honor of serving with you in two capacities. First, as a member of the school committee, and now as a fellow colleague on the Shrewsbury Select Board. You're smart, dedicated, and extremely hardworking. And you're a person of the utmost integrity. You'll always choose to do what's right, as opposed to what would be politically expedient. Your in-depth knowledge of municipal operations is unparalleled. Questions about building project history, unidirectional flushing, water and sewer infrastructure, zoning, strategic land acquisition, Mo knows. He knows because he has had the genuine intellectual curiosity and taken the time to learn as much as possible so that he could do the best job for all of us as Shrewsbury residents. So much has changed since you started 30 years ago, and you continue to learn to meet the times. When you started, there were roughly 25,000 residents and 3,000 school-aged students. Over the past 30 years, we have seen explosive population growth. We have become more diverse. We have experienced significant regulatory mandates, many under or unfunded, and changes in residents' expectations. Yet there's been one constant. The one constant has been Mo. You have always worked hard to evolve with the times and do yeoman work to ensure that our town was well-positioned to deliver services that the now 38,000-plus residents expect and deserve. You leave a tremendous legacy and have accomplished so much during your 30 years of service on the board and have so much to be proud of, including your unwavering leadership during many years of unprecedented financial and regulatory times. Your leadership has helped Shrewsbury continue to grow and to thrive. You've been a tremendous proponent of strategic planning and leave us with the Shrewsbury 2030 Strategic Plan, a blueprint for future success. Your extraordinary efforts as a member of multiple building committees, including service on the police station building committee, which brought us the police station ahead of schedule and under budget. Getting a new police station always was a goal of yours. And your service as a member is a board designate of various committees, including the Affordable Housing Trust. You have been at the forefront of developing and amending bylaws and policies that will ensure the long-term vibrancy of our town. I've learned a lot for you, and thank you for your thoughtfulness, your professionalism, and your friendship. And after taking some well-deserved time off, I hope that you'll become involved in some other capacity. So thank you.
Mo, it has been an honor to serve with you this past year. It has been tremendous learning from you. I feel like I wish I had 29 more years to learn all the things that you hold. You know, local government touches your life every day. It, you know, impacts the way you experience your community, the way you live in your community and your home. And our community is what it is because of your contributions. 30 years doesn't happen by accident. You didn't keep coming back to run again and again for 30 years on accident. It was because you care and because you want to help people. And you didn't get elected 10 times by accident either. And the residents of this community know that when they went to go vote for you, that they were voting for somebody who cared about them. We are all incredibly indebted to you, whether we know it or not. We owe you for making this a community that we want to live in. I chose Shrewsbury as my home. I wasn't born here. I didn't grow up here. This was the place I chose to raise my family. And it is the town that I want to live in because of your contributions. And I know that is true for so many people. So thank you, and enjoy your Tuesdays.
I'll be very brief. A quote that I'm fond of is, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." And I've learned in this, these past few years, that being on this board is a privilege and a responsibility. It can be challenging, but so highly rewarding in ways that I think only someone who has served can really understand. I have seen you work tirelessly for this town and this community consistently in the spirit of helping and advocating for others. And that is something that I sincerely strive to emulate. So I just want to simply say thank you for all of your service. And I know this is not goodbye, because I know you're not going anywhere. So until next time.
Thank you.
So I am going to be interested to see who becomes number one on my speed dial over the next few weeks, because you are the person, when I get in the car, that if I have a question about something, I call. When I tell people that you are retiring from the board, they look at me with disbelief and ask why. I don't think anybody in the community even realizes how quickly, like, the 30 years went by. You're a fixture. I put most of what I wanted to say to you in a card, because you are such a mentor to me, and I am so grateful to have had six years serving with you. Since I joined this board, I feel like I'm doing a goodbye to someone who's served for a long time every year, and you're the last one. And I think of you as sort of my last training wheel. But I also know that you have imparted quite a bit of your wisdom and your knowledge to me over the six years that we've served together, and I'm just really grateful, you know, for all the time that you've taken to make sure that I have what I need to continue on in this role. So I appreciate that. We have a couple of things for you.
Feel free to open it now.
Don't open it now.
Well, it's just so that you can enjoy, you know, your time, or you can even use it while you're watching our meetings on Tuesday nights. Taylor, if you wouldn't mind just putting up on the screen, we were trying to think of the best way to honor you, Mo, and what we came up with was this. So this is a plaque that will eventually go in the grove outside of the police station when it's completed. And we will invite everyone to join us when we dedicate the Police Station Grove, or whatever we're calling it, to, I think they're calling it DiPaolo Park here, informally. But the grove outside the police station will be dedicated to you. And I wish my eyesight was better. This grove...
About the final one.
Can you read it, Taylor? I honestly can't see it.
This grove is in honor of Morris M. DiPaolo for his 30 years of public service to the town of Shrewsbury. And it will say, "And the Select Board on X-day of August 2023."
So, thank you, Mo.
The final one wasn't done yet.
So does that mean it's actually going to get built?
I think we really should do the picture as Mr. LeBeau thought would be a good idea. So if the former members of this board who have served with Mo and Mr. Morgado would like to come up, we can kind of gather here and do a photo. And then you're all welcome to stay. We're going to talk about fiscal projection one, and I think there's a water rate hearing, but I also won't be insulted if you leave. 73. Do you want to speak? Sure. Okay, Mo would like to say a few words, so please don't leave. Don't leave. I will not let them leave.
Please don't leave yet. We're going to have a hearing. No. Please, don't leave yet. Is everybody here? No, I'm looking for someone. Here he is. First of all, let me say thank you. That is very humbling and a little bit embarrassing. It's kind of hard to explain, but it feels strange to be given accolades for just doing your job. So it's something you like to do, but thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I'll try to be brief, but... I said I'll try, Kevin. I didn't say I would. But I do want to recognize Barbara, Paul, and Danielle. Danielle was seven when I first ran. Paul was 13. Barbara was very happy when I ran. Not really. But she was happy after I got elected, and I had to go out a lot. So I used to get a lot of, "Don't you have a meeting?" And my, I think my friend Michael's here somewhere, who's been my treasurer forever and my confidant, and has been with me through this whole thing, actually way before that, since middle school. And I appreciate all his help and always keeping my end and half of the, half of the other selectmen's finances correct. It's two people I want to mention who really got me started on this, on this journey. One of them, ironically enough, is Kevin Byrne. And I'll tell you how he got me started on it. When I decided I wanted to get involved with the town, I wrote a letter, and I think it's because I spelt his name wrong. Actually, I didn't. My secretary, who typed it, spelled his name wrong, and asking to be put on the finance committee. And it was after Spags had bought the ball field, and that was as contentious as the Beal thing was. And he told me that he thought I'd do a good job, but I had to wait a year for things to cool down. So I helped the phone. He was not happy, and I won't tell you what I said. But a little while later, I was standing out in Spag's parking lot, and they had started doing the construction. And I was standing next to Franny Polito, who I've known all my life. I never can remember a time I didn't know him. And I was whining to him how Kevin didn't put me on the, wouldn't put me on the finance committee. And Franny said, "What the heck with the finance committee?" He was like, "You should run for selectmen." I was like, "No, I can't do that. I'm afraid of my own shadow. I can't speak in public." And he encouraged me to do it. And I thought about it for a day or two, and I decided to do it. But before I made the decision, I went home, and at dinner, I said to Barbara, "I think I'm going to run for selectmen." And there were crickets in the air. I said, "This is not starting out well." The next day, because I used to work a lot of hours down at Spags, I went to Spags' office, and I said, "I think I better tell him what I do." And I said to him, "I decided to run for selectmen," and I got crickets. And I said, "This is not good." But I decided to do it anyways. And so because Kevin gave me a different path, and Franny encouraged me, here I am 30 years later. But they both had a big impression on me, made a big impression. Kevin taught me a lot about how politics works, mostly after-town meetings. But he was always there to coach me, and I really appreciate it. And I forever have appreciated Franny encouraging me to do this and always being there for me during the 30 years, because this truly would not have happened if it was, if it was not for him. And it was just from that encouragement, because I really didn't think I had it in me to do it. So thank you very much, Franny, and Kevin. I appreciate it. And I just have to say something about a few of my fellow selectmen, the Lieutenant Governor, who I knew when we both were at Spags. So we go way back. But it was, it was so great to watch somebody who you knew way back when, and then become a selectman, and then become a state rep, and then become the Lieutenant Governor, and be able to say, "Wow, I know that person." And you don't get to say that all the time. And it was just so great to watch you rise up through state politics and know that I knew you when you started and that we were colleagues on the board. It was just fantastic. And I'm still in awe of it. And it was just, it was great. And to think you started in that old selectmen's room with us and those dreary brown walls and all of that. But it was, it was really part of the experience. and all of that, but it was really part of the experience, and it was great all the way through. And you did a great job as Lieutenant Governor, and I give you a lot of credit for, you think it was a big deal, 30 years on this. I really don't think it came anywhere near what you did, especially during COVID, so congratulations to you. When I first got elected, there were three open seats on the Board of Selectmen. That was, it was a coincidence when I was running, because I was running regardless of what was going to happen. I decided in November I was going to run. But there ended up being three open seats. And there was Donna O'Connor, did you have six years at the time? Whatever. It was at least six. So Donna was the experienced person. There was Ed Fitzgerald, no relation to Henry, who was on the Board for a year. And there was me, Laurie, and Bruce Cott. And I think I can say with a lot of confidence that we really didn't know what we were doing at that time. And we, so Ed was sitting at his seat, Donna was sitting in the chair seat, because it was pretty obvious he was going to be Chair. And we walked in, and there was a booklet in front of the other three seats, and there was a little, like a jewelry box on top of the booklet. And we sat down, we opened it up, and we had this little Selectmen's badge. It was like, "This is cool. What do you do with this?" And then there was this thing that said, I think it was, said Mass Selectmen's Association, Selectmen's Handbook. That was it. Donna gavels the meeting, and we stop. That was our training. So Donna had to, how she ever made it through the first two years at least was beyond me. So, thank you very much. Like the mother hen, how you got us through that is beyond me, and how you made it through it is beyond me. But you did a great job and became a great friend. You were a great friend before, but even more of a great friend during that process. And then, my favorite board, John Moirid, Jim and Henry. That was, I'm not, I hope nobody else gets upset that I say it, but to me, that was the best Selectmen's experience I had. I think everybody on the Board was smarter than me. Maybe that's why I enjoyed it so much. But it was just great working with everybody. I think we just clicked, and things just worked out really, really great. And they would have been better, Henry, if you ran the third time, but you didn't. And then, my fun Selectman was Tom Fiore. He was there for nine years. Tom was great to work with. Tom and I sat over there for a number of years, and I believe Dan used to call us the Mediterranean Wing. Tom taught me how to lighten up, not take this too seriously, and things would work out. And it was the only time I really wasn't serious at meetings, and it was Tom, and it used to be a lot of fun. And he really, he really put this whole thing into perspective, and it was just great. So anyways, that's about that. I do have to say, I was lucky. I'm the only Selectman to work with three Town Managers. I'm pretty sure of that, right, John? Wherever you are? I got to work with the Dean of Town Managers in the state for several years. Mr. Conney was absolutely unbelievable. It was only one person I ever met professionally who called him Dick. I don't care where you went. You went to Boston, everybody called him Mr. Conney. And there was a reason for that. So I was lucky to have that experience and get to learn from him. And then, as much as Kevin said he learned from me, that's really a lot of baloney. Working with Dan and working with Kevin, unbelievable experience. Two of the smartest guys I know. We're lucky to have them. I learned a lot from them. The town is really, really fortunate that we had Dan and that we have Kevin. And I'm very happy that I was on both committees that picked both of these gentlemen. And they're just incredible. Dan was absolutely the right person to come after Mr. Conney, and Kevin was absolutely the right person to come after Dan. And I learned something from every day that I worked with them. And I did drive Kevin nuts, and he had more hair than what he has now when he started. And I know he's going to miss me when I'm gone, because nobody else is going to aggravate him like I did. But truly, they're fantastic people. Kevin's got us positioned for the future, and I'm just lucky that I got to work with all three of them. And the office staff, and I'm not going to name everybody, but the office staff that we have is fantastic. Going into an office where everybody who's in the office could be one of my kids age-wise, it's pretty interesting. I think some of them weren't born when I started, so that's pretty, but it's a great, great staff.
He was 13 when he started.
Yeah. You were 13, is that right? You're as old as my son. So, that was an interesting experience. The first time I realized, after about three months Kevin was here, I'm looking at him, and his birthday's the same time. It's like within a week or two. I looked at him, I started chuckling. He said, "What are you laughing at?" I said, "Just realized, you're as old as my son." You know, like, I wouldn't, I would not have the same interaction with my son sitting on the other side of that desk. So that was, I said, "Wow, this is really kind of interesting." But anyways, the Town Hall staff is great. And when you walk in that office, there's excitement in there. There's excitement and there's competence, and I can't wait to go in there in five or 10 years, when they've got a lot of experience. And they really have gotten this down, and I just think it's going to be incredible. I think when you all, probably in five years, you're going to have, we're going to train them, and they're going to go somewhere else because they're that good. They are really, really good, and it's great to go in there. And everybody in Town Hall is great. I don't care which office you walk into, they're great. And I really have to thank all of them, the department heads, because I was one of the Selectmen, probably more than anybody else, walk in, would talk to the department heads and ask them questions. And they were great. They'd always help me out. They always taught me. If I asked them a question, they would tell me what was going on. And that's how I learned about unit directional flushing from them and from Paul Howard, who's in the audience, and he's our, he was our consulting engineer, he just retired. That's how I learned about all that stuff. But the department heads are great, and they'll help anybody. If you ask them, they'll tell you. And I encourage all the Selectmen to do that, because the only way you're going to learn, unless you do what I did and go stand next to the guys who were flushing the hydrants and ask them why they were doing it that way. If you buy them a coffee, you get a lot of mileage out of it. And then, I'm not going to go through all the other stuff, but I will, I do want to acknowledge some people who I asked if they would come tonight, because they were important in my career. And one of them is Dr. Bent. People who know him know that he attacked his job with a lot of passion. He's extremely intelligent. He knew what he was talking about, and he did a lot for the school system in a time when we had a lot of issues with the public believing that our school system was going to grow and that we needed schools. And he was just so passionate and just so articulate when he was presenting. He always impressed me. And sometimes we were, I never was as articulate as him, but I can remember times when we were both up advocating for the schools, and I was just blown away by his passion. And a lot of times, I kept thinking to myself, "This guy's really Italian," because he just was too animated and just too passionate. But he's a great, great guy, and we became good colleagues, and I really, really appreciate you coming tonight, Dr. Bent. And then, there's a few other guys. Mike Pagano, who, his firm designed most of our buildings. 1993, we had a debt exclusion question for a middle school, and as usual at that time, it didn't pass. If anybody was around that time, you'd know that was not unusual. And immediately after that, the school put a study committee together, and I was on that committee, and Ted Coughlin chaired it, and Mike was on the committee with us. And that started in September of 93. So I've known Mike. That was the beginning of a work relationship that went for almost 30 years before he retired, but I still see Mike and ask him questions and get advice and just have coffee with him. So I've had a great relationship with him. He's been a great mentor. That's how I learned about the buildings. But a great guy, and he did a great job for the town, and I just really appreciate your friendship and knowing you, Mike. And I thank you for coming. And then, I have Paul Howard, you wouldn't see a lot of the results of Paul's work, because everything is underground. But that's how I learned about the water system, which everybody thinks is kind of silly, but if you want to turn your faucet on and get water, you really want to know that guy. And he's been great. Paul's, he worked for us for, came in 27 years ago. So I've known him almost, well, I've known him the whole time he's been here. And he's a great guy. He knows his stuff. He helped us out a lot, getting stuff straightened out, always patient and answered my questions, some of which sometimes sounded, they were probably dumb, but that's how you learn. And he's a great guy, and I really enjoyed working with him and learning from him. So, thank you for coming, Paul. I really appreciate it. And then Howard Grossman. Howard Grossman's the guy who turned what was Spags at one time and then kind of not a nice place for a while into Lakeway Commons. And I met him at that time, and he was a miracle worker down there. And if anybody knew the landowners down there, I think you would still be amazed that Howard could put the land deal together down there, because nobody could put a land deal together down there with the landowners. But beyond that, Howard's just a really great guy. He's just a fantastic person, and I've come to know him. He's been, he's been a big supporter of the town. You'll hear a common theme through what I say about coffee. We've had coffee a lot, and I got to learn a lot, lot from him about that industry. And I got to learn a lot about him as a person, and he's just a great person. He's been great to me, and he's just a great guy. So, thank you, and thank you for mentoring me to the extent that I was able to learn. So, thank you. I appreciate it. And then, I'll just say one more thing. Christine, I think we're part of a mutual admiration society. The first time I heard Christine speak was, I think it was a hairy cutting of a ward at that barn over at that housing thing. And I was standing in the back of the room, and I heard you speak, and I turned to somebody I was standing next to, and I said, "This person is incredible." I said, "Wow, this person's going to make something happen over SYFS." And you did. And you've done an incredible job over there. And yes, some of us did help get funding for you and supported you, but you're the reason SYFS is what it is. And I just think you did a great job, and I appreciate your friendship, but I think the town should really appreciate what you did with that organization. You really took it to the next level, and you did a great job. And I hope to stay a few more years to keep it going, because I think you're going to be hard to replace. But thank you very much. And the only other thing I'll say is, the reason I think I was able to stay and do this for 30 years is I think I had the same passion yesterday as I did the day I started. And a lot of you said it, and I just always had the desire to help people. Barbara used to say, which is kind of true, that I always wanted to save the world. I really just wanted to save Shrewsbury. I wasn't that ambitious. And it really is about helping people. And a lot of times, the most satisfying stuff in this job is, it's great to look back and look at the library and look at the police station, look at all the other stuff we built, and go, "Wow, you know, we got that stuff built. This is really great. We got a great library." I really get the most satisfaction out of when somebody comes up to me who can't get a street light on this street, or they can't get this problem fixed, or they got a problem on one of their bills, and for some reason they just can't get it straightened out, and you help them out with it, and you get it straightened out. And we're dealing with $140, $150 million budget, and you help a person with something like that, and it's like you gave them gold, because it's, that person's problem is important to them, and that's what they see. That's what they need fixed, and they know that people care about them. And to me, you get the most satisfaction out of helping that, because the other stuff's important, but I really think at that level is the most important thing we do. People want to know that the town government cares, and to me, those kind of things, and things that are a little bit bigger, just tell people that your government's there and your government cares. To me, that's what it's all about. I don't care what else we do. It all boils down to that. And that's always stayed with me, and that's really helped me keep going on. And the other thing is just always asking why, always wanting to know how things work, why we can't do things, why we have to do something that way. And if there's a new idea, I'm willing to try it, even if it's not my idea, because in the end, it's not getting the credit, it's getting it done. And I just think I carried that all the way through, and it just, I don't think there's ever a day I didn't like this job. I always woke up with some idea. It's probably because I'm ADD, but I always had some, there's always something new that came up in my mind and said, "Jeez, I wonder if we could do that." And I just think keeping that enthusiasm and just keeping the, caring about people and wondering what else we could do for people is just what kept me going. So anyways, this all was nice and way over the top, not used to anything like that. I appreciate it, and I thank you all for coming. And I guess now, I guess we're going to have to finish the meeting, and that will be it.
I told you he couldn't be brave.
But you won't have to listen to me again. I didn't think it would. Thanks. See you.
Hi, I'm good. How are you?
Wasn't that fun? That wasn't everything I was going to say. Thank you.
Not for the next two weeks. I'm going to Arizona. I'm going tomorrow. I'll see you when I come back.
Yeah. Alright, thanks. See you, Tom. See you, Mike. Thank you. Jean?
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't see you there. Thank you, Tony.
Oh, I really felt you were going to stay for a little bit. I don't know if you understand. They can take the task.
What?
I read the report, but I'll look at it tonight.
Oh, this isn't mine.
Can we do one more thing real quick?
Sure.
So we got you a little, something to hang on the wall from the town staff.
Oh, so I had to channel you a little bit when I put this together. So you like to send me old newspaper clippings and whatnot. And I thought this would be the perfect one to use of day one. And I also channeled you when I went down to the town clerk's office and went through all the annual reports. And you'll find all the names of the people you served with during your 30 years around the outside, so.
Wow.
I ran out of time for the Maj-Paj collage of all the other photos, but I think this sums it up pretty well, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll say.
I didn't have to embarrass you in front of everyone, but if they come back and watch it, they could see.
You know how long we worked on that, that little slogan? Took hours to come up with that. That's what happens when you have six people in a room. Thank you. That's neat.
We're Waller. Yay.
The reason I have that is my mother saved it and a bunch of photos she had. And I was cleaning it out, I was cleaning the stuff out about, I don't know, a month or two ago. And I found it, why she kept it.
Because you're her son.
So now it's saved in my email, so it won't ever lose it up again.
What'd you do with those other pictures, those other photos?
Where are my email?
No.
In the archive.
Yeah. Under my important documents folder, so.
Are we?
Don't worry.
Where are we?
We're in number four.
Okay. All right. Public comment. Nobody applied for a public comment, so we don't have anything to do with that. Do we have anything on fiscal projection two?
Yeah, I do want to walk through that with the board. I'd like to just touch on a couple of things to make sure that you all are 100% up to speed with where we're going with the budget for town meeting. So I'll just touch on the changes that were made. Taylor, are you able to project the, the slides that are in the fiscal folder for me, please?
Yep.
So I'll get started. So we haven't made a significant amount of changes to the operating budget. A lot of changes outside of the operating budget and the total spending, but everything is already encapsulated within the annual town meeting warrant. So I don't believe there are really any surprises. Taylor, if you want to go to the third slide. So we have updated the financials. The main changes in the financials are associated with the other available funds and free cash. So the other available funds are the funds that we're bringing in mainly from the Beal Elementary School project to pull into the Oak Middle School window project and the cemetery expansion. We've updated state aid based on House Ways and Means, which actually has provided roughly $200,000 in additional revenue because we used an estimate in advance of the governor submitting her budget for the first time for March 1st. So Taylor, if you can move forward. With regards to our summary of expenditures, again, the main thing that changed is associated with the warrant articles. We've added in the necessary expenditures associated with the Community Preservation Act articles, the Full Capital Improvement Plan, the Oak Middle School windows. So we're just encapsulating everything in the revenue expenditure model. So now I'll talk a little bit about the operating budget, if you can go to the next slide, please. So when we look at the operating budget, the first functional area, administration and finance, includes the funding associated with shared operating support. So those accounts that benefit both the town Selco, or municipal school and Selco in some form or fashion. The largest change, of course, is what we've talked about, associated with health insurance, taking up over $500,000 of that change. Just a few minor changes in the relative grand scheme of things associated with the overall operating budget of just shy of $146 million. Okay. Taylor, you can move on. So administration and finance, most departments have ins and outs or slight adjustments. We have moved funding down out of the personnel board from travel and training, which we centralized during fiscal projection one because it was a necessity at that time. As the budgets matured, we've taken the more traditional approach and reallocated those funds out to the individual departments. We've provided adequate funding in the town manager's budget to onboard and support at staffing levels that we currently have right now, which was a change that we made just to get through fiscal projection one. We are moving forward, of course, with the selection of a new assistant town manager for operations. We have funding included for that, so we can move forward. Operating support, again, here's the major change associated with the budget from fiscal projection one, which is just about $500,000 associated with the adjustment upwards for health insurance. This carries a 10% year-over-year cost increase, which has been required for the Western Bourbon Health Group and our plans there. We have also adjusted upwards general insurance by $170,000. We've done a lot of work, or I should say, you know, Alex Martinez and David Snowden have done a lot of work. We're out in the marketplace right now, talking to a few brokers and our current insurance provider to make sure we get the best number for the town. And when we say the best number, we of course have to consider value as real estate value and construction prices have gone up. We need to make sure we have sufficient insurance coverage in place. We don't want to have a lapse if we do have some type of loss, so we're reviewing all that. I hope to still be able to come in under the number, but right now I feel it's prudent to, to keep the additional $170,000 in there as we clean things up over the next few weeks. With regards to public safety, not a lot of changes here. We've, we've made some adjustments within the fire department to make sure it's right size. It still includes full funding for the four additional, excuse me, funding for the four additional firefighters with the benefit of the American Rescue Plan Act. You know, safer grant model that we're using, paying 25% there. So no additional staffing changes. The next slide, retirement, no changes there. Public Works Administration, a minor change in that million dollar administration line item. All the other departments laying level, or all the other divisions laying level there within DPW. When it comes to community development, really just the, the ins for the travel and training, associated adjustments. And pretty much the same on the next slide with human services. So debt services remained unchanged, so we, we developed those final two slides for debt and interest, pull all that together. We still have about $12.5 million in debt service moving forward. And then finally, the final slide here is a summary of the utilities. So just some minor adjustments downwards across the utilities as we've matured those numbers with the net reduction across all those lines. So I know it went really fast. The board is well aware of, you know, the significant changes that we made. All the funding is rounded out and includes everything that's in the warrant for the 54 articles, including CPA. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them and go through any details.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one. Where I see plus one FTE, that's not new, right? That was in fiscal projection one. This is just carryover.
Yeah, there's no new staffing changes from fiscal projection one to fiscal projection two, but we just wanted to make sure we're transparent where we are adding staffing year-over-year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, but why is this so waste down instead of just refining the calculation?
Yes, with the, the good work from Keith and Jeff and Gosia in the DPW, the bids for the yard waste program came in under, so we were able to lower that cost.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. The next item is public hearing regarding adjusting the water rates and recommendations. Who's going to take us through this?
Yeah. I'll have Dan and Jeff walk up and.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to review the water rate analysis one more time and provide the information to the community. Go to the next slide, Taylor, if you have a second. Thank you. Tonight, we'll recap the purpose of the water rate study, provide an overview of the process, review the financial plans, the proposed rate structure, how that rate structure impacts the customers, and dive a little bit deeper into the CIP before we review the final recommendations before the water commissioners tonight. All right. So first, the purpose of this rate study and really any water study is to ensure the water system continues to provide safe and clean water. We want to make sure that we're doing this through sound fiscal management that ensures revenues are equitably derived and able to match expenditures. All right, Taylor. So we're going to look at the, the rate study overview right now. And we, we take a three-step process in the development of the rate design. So first, we compare current sources, uses of funds, and determine the revenues needed from the rates to meet the future expenditures. Then we allocate revenue requirements to customer classes in a fair and equitable manner that complies with industry standards. And then finally, we consider what rate structure alternatives will best meet the town's needs to match expenditures with revenues. All right, Taylor. So here, this is a visual representation of the revenue requirements in the development of the final rate structure plan. We can see all the financial inputs on the left-hand side that feed into the cash flow requirements. From the top, we have the, the capital requirements. And then the bottom, we have our fiscal policies that we try to, that we aim to meet each year with our cash reserves and making sure that we meet our debt service requirements. And all those go in to really understand what our annual revenue requirements are each fiscal year. All right. So now we'll review the financial plans and the required rate revenues. If we go to the next one, this current graph represents the revenue requirements based on source. And you can see those in the individual bar graphs. And the annual cash flow is in the yellow line graph that's running across. And this is representative of no rate increase. So if we were to, this is status quo. If we were to make no change, our revenue is there and our expenditures are seen in each fiscal year. And what we're seeing is, without any change in our funding models, our, our rates, we would have extreme difficulty meeting the requirements for FY '24. And as we continue forward, that would really dig into the ability to pay our existing debt as well as operating costs increase. Go to the next one. Taylor, thanks. So this is a similar graph shown with the revenue requirements, again, in the bar graphs. We have made some changes and I'll, I'll review those in a second. And then as well, the yellow line is the, the cash flow with, under the proposed financial plan. There is a three and a half percent rate increase in year one, FY '24. And then each ensuing year, there is another 5% increase. Now, one of the major differences we did here, which we'll go in more detail later when we look at the capital plan, is we are moving to a model that uses authorized debt to fund the capital improvement plan as opposed to cash-funded capital. So historically, we would fund all of the capital through the, the cash we had on hand. And we'll see this in greater detail later, but if we were to do that now, we wouldn't be able to sustain a three and a half percent increase in year one. It would have to be a 30% increase in year one and then 20 to 25% each year after. Thank you, Taylor. All right. So in the rate structure, we're going to look at the current rate structure and the proposed rate structure. At this point in time, we have a conservation-based rate structure wherein residents are charged higher rates as their water consumption increases. There's also a fixed base rate charge that's based off of the meter size. The proposed rate structure is keeping with this, with this system. We're not going to provide any adjustments to the base rate as we feel like those base meter charges are consistent across the market. But we have updated the tiered rate charges as users' rates increase. So if we go to the next slide, Taylor. This is a representation of the rate, the rates that would be applied. We have our current rates and we have the proposed rates. At the, the top left, you see the charge by meter. These are the quarter meter charges based off of, the quarterly charges based off the meter size. And then I have them broken out by customer class, residential and condominium, commercial, apartments, summer service, municipal and schools, and then municipal and school lawns. All right. So the best way for us to really understand this is to understand the customer impacts and really have a good understanding of the dollar changes each quarter for all of our customers. So here we have both a table and a graph. We'll look at the graph first. This is, displays customer impacts for our residential and condominium users with less than one inch meter or 5/8 inch meter, which is about 99 and a half percent of all of those customers. There's also bar graphs for 8,000 gallons consumed a quarter, 12,000, 17,000, and 30,000 gallons each consumed a quarter. Those approximately represent 25%, 50%, 75%, and 90% of the, the, the usage each quarter by those customers. So it's giving us a good snapshot of what, you know, residents might be using per quarter. And then the table provides sort of the whole gamut by five and 10,000 gallon increments, up to 65,000 gallons for residents. If we look at the table on the last column, percent change, you can see that up to 17,000 gallons, it goes from zero to 3%. And then at 65,000 gallons, we're seeing a top-out percentage at three and a quarter percentage. So this is sort of, we're trying to align the rate increase such that as residents used more water, they were charged a higher rate, but also making sure that the customers that were using more water were also providing the revenue that matched that, so that their use of the system was similar to the revenue being raised. All right, Taylor. Another item we're proud about with this structure is building off the work of the tax relief program. This water rate recommends the implementation of a quarterly credit in the amount of the customer's base meter rate. Customers who file and meet the tax exemptions through the assessor's office will automatically be enrolled in the water rate credit where applicable. So if they don't have a water account, then it wouldn't apply. But if, if they do, the base rate would be credited on each quarterly billing. At this point, there is about 215 customers that have met the requirements and that's about, it would be a total credit to the community of about $17,000 a year. All right, Taylor. All right, capital improvement plan. So this is where some things have changed a little bit more from what we've done in the past, and I want to make sure we spend some time here to be as clear as possible. This table here is the five-year capital plan. It's broken out in three different funding sections. The top one is the debt authorized CIP, which we're seeking from town meeting. Then we have our cash-funded CIP, which we're also requesting at town meeting, but that's cash on hand. And then finally, we have this SRF debt capital plan for the PFOS treatment plant, which we are in the process of applying for and seeking funding from the state for the following years. All right. So now we'll, we'll go back to the top. If you look through the debt authorized CIP for fiscal years '24 through '26, you'll see expenditures for ongoing water mains, meters, tank replacements, and the, excuse me, the PFOS treatment plant design. Those three years total 12 million in work. That is absolutely critical. And DPW Director and Superintendent Dan Rowley, DPW Director Jeff Holland and Superintendent Rowley will be able to answer some questions on that later. And then if you look in the out years, FY '26 through FY '28, you can see the 18 million that would be required to meet the requirements in the development and construction of a PFOS treatment plant. All right, Taylor. Thank you. All right. All right. So the proposed financial plan seeks bond authorization at town meeting for the three-year total capital plan. Smaller bond issuances would then be issued as needed. The town meeting bond authorization amount would be $12 million with the approximate bond authorization amounts shown as seen: $4,740,000 in FY '24, $4,680,000 in FY '25, and $2,580,000 in FY '26. The Water Division will seek another bond authorization of 18 million in May 2025 to fund the construction of the PFOS treatment plant. A borrowing strategy would reduce the increases year over year to under 5% with a three-and-a-half percent increase in FY '24. As I mentioned earlier, if this was cash-funded, we'd be looking at a 30% increase in year one. And let's see, each bond issuance assumes equal principal structures as requested with our financial advisor. And interest calculations are estimates at this point in time. And the estimates used for the first three years are about 4.5% to 5%, and then for the SRF funding, we use an estimate, an estimate of 2% interest each year. All right. Next, oh, thank you, Taylor. So this is another comparison of the current rate, the debt-funded CIP, which would be proposed, or if we were to do this through cash funding, at those same residential and condominium breakdowns of 8,000 gallons, 12,000 gallons, 17,000 gallons, and 30,000 gallons. And really, you can see in the differences in the quarterly charges here. So if we were to take, I think 17,000 gallons is probably a pretty consistent number for a lot of residential homes in the area. Currently, a family would be spending $98.30 a quarter. Under the proposed plan, that would increase to $101.27. And if we were to do this cash-funded, that would increase to $132.22. So it would be about a $34 increase if this was cash-funded, and we're proposing about a $3 increase with our proposed debt-funded capital plan. And then now, last, we go over our recommendations. Tonight, the recommendation to the select board is to increase the water rates by three-and-a-half percent in aggregate across all customers for FY '24. We recommend that the select board set a public hearing on the water, oh, we already did that, so we won't recommend that again. We will recommend that the select board adopt the debt-funded capital plan strategy. We recommend that the select board adopt the proposed credit policy. And then some more information. The rate increases will support debt-funded capital improvement plan. It'll enhance the revenue stability in conjunction with our reserve targets. It'll continue to incentivize the efficient use of town resources, and the credit policy will require some modifications to our current billing operations, but that's completely within the scope of our department's works. And that wraps it up. All right, I'm happy to answer any questions, and for the more detailed questions, we do have experts here that can answer those as well.
I have a question.
Yep.
So I think there's some confusion in the community around why there's this need for a whole nother, like, treatment plant for PFOS, and why the current plant doesn't remove PFOS, and why we built a plant, which I think is predated the identification of PFOS, that wouldn't address PFOS. So I was just wondering if we could just spend a few minutes just sort of level-setting why we need this PFOS plant, and how the current plant, you know, just why it doesn't remove PFOS.
As you guys figure out who you want to speak first, the PFOS has always been in the 10-year plan, and then they'll detail the changes that have recently come to the town through the state that have really ramped that up and made it imperative that we do this sooner.
Thank you.
So, great question, and certainly, when you talk of big numbers like this, it's a really valid question. We have a $12 million investment at the current treatment plant, and we're looking at another 18, $19 million by the time we design for PFAS. So the plant that we have now was designed to remove manganese. So the technology that's used to remove manganese, it's, there's a biological process that oxidizes the manganese, and then it's filtered out through sand, and then it's backwashed out. So it's not, it's not designed to address PFOS. So we've tested our water, you know, post-filter, so we know that it does not remove the PFOS. So we've, we've gone ahead and piloted several different technologies, medias to remove the PFAS, which will require another building, pressure vessels, and a lot of infrastructure. So we'll have a treatment train of, you know, going through to remove the manganese, and then going through to remove PFAS.
So the, the current treatment plant will not be rendered obsolete. We just need an additional mechanism to address PFOS. What else will come out of the water with the PFOS treatment? Like, does anything else?
So, we pilot-tested four different media, types of media. Two of the four will actually remove some of the hexavalent chromium that we have in the water. And the two medias that are, that are being recommended by our consultant are the two that will remove part or some of the hexavalent chromium. So that is an added benefit. To go back sort of to your earlier question, when the original plant was designed and constructed, we did not fall, or PFOS was tested, but we, it was at that time non-detect because the testing limits were higher than they currently are now. So at the time the plant was designed, constructed, and even put online, PFAS numbers were not tested that low. And, and also, currently, we meet Massachusetts standards for PFAS that we do not have to provide treatment currently. The current standard is 20 parts per trillion for six different PFAS com, uh, compo, uh, compounds added together. The new federal, which actually came out March 23rd, I believe it was, March 25th, about three weeks ago, came out with a draft MCL that would lower that standard federally to four parts per trillion for two different compounds each, which actually, we meet Massachusetts, will not meet the new federal. The draft has come out. They believe that it will be put into standard at the end of this calendar year, which usually then takes about two years to promulgate the regulations. We are actually, I think, a little fortunate, we are actually ahead of the game because we did pilot-test. We were proactive to see where it is, see where the problem, what lied, and was proactive in the adage that it, you have, everybody will have PFAS unless you don't test, pretty much.
When you say every, you mean every community?
Just about.
Correct, yeah. All right. May I ask a follow-up question to that?
Sure.
So I just want to clarify, I think what I understand is that when we built the manganese plant, it was not, we were testing, we weren't even detecting PFAS with the tests that we had in place. And now, so what we, now with the new standards, we are in compliance with Massachusetts standards, but we are not going to be in compliance with the federal standards. So in building the PFAS plant, we would have needed two separate, because they're two completely separate systems. So it's not, we didn't make a mistake, or, you know, poor, it wasn't poorly planned. It's, we would need two entirely separate systems to remove the manganese and to remove the PFAS. So this isn't, is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, obviously, at, at the time, if we had known they were both there, it would have, the construction would have been easier. Now, we have to design a treatment plant or in addition to the existing while maintaining the existing plant online, where the other one, we actually had two separate buildings. We had the old building, the old plant, sort of across the driveway, so to speak. We built the other one, completely separate, independent, easier to construct because there's nothing in the way. Now, we have to, the hardest part will be reconfiguring the piping before, during, and after.
Good. Thank you.
You asked my question.
I don't have, I don't have 10,000 questions today.
I just add to that.
Sure.
You know, in terms of, of the treatment plan we have now came online in 2018. In 2019, when I first, when I first took this role, one of my, the first day on the job, we had a conference call with Mass DEP, because we had, we had volunteered to be, you know, part of the PFAS testing, and at that time, the, the technology and the lab science had just changed to, to, to get to nanograms per liter, parts per trillion, and it was a, a formula of how they calculated out our levels, because prior to that, we did test, and it was micrograms per liter as part of the UCMR, and it just, that's how fast this has changed, and it's, it's had the impacts in, in literally the last four years.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I, you know, wanted that clarification.
Yes.
Because I think it's important for people to know it wasn't, we didn't like, you know, as a community, as I wasn't on this board at the time, but, you know, as a community, we didn't fail to plan for it. It was, it was something that wasn't even really on the radar at that point, so, thanks.
Mr. Samia.
Just a follow-up to these questions related to this. So when PFOS and PFO and all of this, when this, when manganese removal was put in place, there wasn't really a thought about PFOS. It's everywhere, but there wasn't a thought about extracting it. How will we strategically be able to deal with the next PFOS? Because building this, it goes to the point of, we didn't know, right? No one knew. And change, standards are changing, technology's changing. With HexChrom, it may change, and right now, we're compliant, but then that may be a challenge. So how can we get ahead of this? And I know it's universally problematic for every district in the Commonwealth, but is there, what is the next flavor of the month for water quality? What are we hearing, and how do we best prepare for that? Because we're going to guess, right? We're going to do it serially, obviously, to take benefit of the water flow, but what will be the next standard? And how do we best prepare for that?
So that's a great question, and that's, that's, that's a hard one to answer.
Right.
From my perspective, the federal government has the UCMR, unregulated, unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, and that's, that, we're on the fifth, it's every five years they come out. So in this sequence, there's a number of PFAS compounds, and then lithium. And I, I look at that as perhaps a, maybe a glimpse into what could be coming down the road, but it's, it's really hard to know.
Correct.
That's the challenge with it, but HexChrom too, right? Isn't there a possibility that they could go sub-limits within that that we could face going forward? I know we were at 3.8 parts per billion, and it goes, you know, even five or six below the standards, but as time goes, it's, how, is there any way to strategize this? Because we don't know what the next thing will be. We're not clear for you.
I wish that was an easy answer. Unfortunately, it's the, and the chemical of the year.
Right.
Which we don't know what that's going to be. As Dan said, the UCMR, which is our five-year testing that we have to do, which is above and beyond their yearly, monthly, quarterly, daily, and yearly lab work that they have to do, this year does require us to do lithium.
Okay.
Which, is that the next one? Or are they just trying to find? Now, this is a national, so it's federal. It's not just Massachusetts. It's a, it's a federal concern. And they are, what is it now, 23 or 30 in the new UCMR of PFOs and PFOS compounds?
Yeah.
Is that going to change? We don't know.
Right.
There are countless other things that change. When we were in the process of designing the current treatment plant, I, you know, Mo may remember, the day of town meeting was the day that the report came out that we had hexavalent chromium in the water, and our plant was already on the street forbidding. And we panicked of, what do we do now?
Mm-hmm.
And that's when we did, we did a lot of research. I'll give credit to our previous Water Superintendent Bob Dezeski. He spent a lot of time contacting everybody that he could in California, and in Oklahoma, and Georgia, and other places that had this same problem. Our concentrations are so low versus them, the other states. But we don't, right, hexavalent chromium may change.
Right.
The technology in both water treatment may change. The lab, how much, how low can you detect at the labs? That methodology continuously changes. So we don't know what that's going to be.
Okay, that's guessing. I mean, it's doing the best you can with the knowledge that you have.
Correct.
We're ahead of it as much as we can be. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up? I'm sorry. So you said the UCMR testing, and we do that every five years, and this is a testing year?
We're, we're in a testing cycle, so over the next couple of years, we'll, we'll conduct the tests.
Okay.
Period, there's a window we have to do it in.
Okay, so is it, it's not, is it, so I guess my question is, like, what is the, what is the process for that? It's not like a one-time, you know, samples? Is it testing, you know, once a month, once a day, throughout, for an entire year? Like, what does that testing cycle look like? And when, you know, when would we, would that give us a good profile of what our water looks like throughout the year, and throughout, you know, changing seasons? And when would we have the results of that?
So it's, it's over the course of, it's multiple samples over the course of a year. And we're due to start it by the end of this year.
So it would be, so we would start the sampling at the end of this calendar year?
Yes.
So then, would that, the sampling be concluded at the end of next calendar year?
Yes.
Okay. And do we get the results all at one, once, when it's concluded? Or do we get the results as the, those periodic samples come throughout the year, that year?
We should get the results as they come in.
Okay.
We, we organize the, the sampling through our lab.
Okay.
Which is approved by the federal government.
Okay. Is it, is the water sampled our finished water, or is it?
Boy, I think it's, could be both.
I think it's, yeah, depending on what they're looking for.
Okay.
Now, that's above and beyond our normal sampling that we do. We do test it for a slew of chemicals and compounds and, and things that we're required to test for. So this is above and beyond of things that are not normally tested for.
Yes, yeah. So, and that, and that is, you know, like you said, includes lithium and things that we currently are not required by.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Moving on. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add, no.
Dave, you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
This is a public hearing. It is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this? No? Hey, you have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? No? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, votes, so voted. Item eight.
So, Mr. Schipman, although you won't be here at our next meeting, we'll have the board formally consider the rate as proposed this evening.
You're welcome to attend, though.
I'll watch it, I'll watch it on TV.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, is a continued public hearing from April 11th. Taylor Wolf, Connoisseur Cooking, LLC, DVA Arrow, Ray's Bistro. They requested a continuance to May 23rd.
Correct.
They're not ready yet, so what is the pleasure of the board?
I motion that we continue the public hearing until May 23rd, 2023.
What time?
7:05.
7:05?
7:05 PM.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, if there being none, if you have a second?
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, votes, so voted. The next item of business is to review and act on the addition of supplemental employee benefits for fiscal 2024. Okay. Ms. Caspian, half of this, I have to recuse, so I'm just going to recuse an whole thing, so.
Okay. I got it.
You can do that.
All right. Just introduce yourselves, people at home.
I'm Nick Haas, I'm the Town Benefits Coordinator.
Good evening, I'm Christina Ordong, I'm the Director of Human Resources with the Town.
So we're here because we are trying to add a couple of supplemental benefit offerings to our current benefit offerings. So there's
So we're here because we are trying to, um, add a couple of supplemental benefit offerings to our current benefit offerings. So there's a couple of different topics to discuss, including Altus Vision, uh, Altus Dental for retirees, as well as a Colonial benefits package. So kind of some of the backstory too as well. We've had a lot of demand for, for some supplemental things for people. Most notably is the retiree dental, I'd say, um, just because they don't have that offering. It gives them some flexibility to, to add to, to what we currently offer. And this way the, the people don't have to go out on their own to search for these offerings. Like, people retire, they ask me about, well, where can they get dental coverage? And I don't really have a good answer for them, so this kind of helps them, so they don't have to take that time to do that as well. So the first item is the Altus Vision package. So that would be rolled into our current Altus Dental coverage that we offer. And this would be for a July 1st effective date of this year. It would be for all active benefit eligible employees, which is the same as our dental coverage. Employees could enroll in either the dental or vision. They don't have to do both. So they have the opportunity to do whichever they choose or both if they'd like to. It also, by adding the vision plan to our current dental plan, allowed our rates, our proposed rate increase for our renewal to decrease by 2%. So that was another, uh, win for employees as well. Next, for the retiree dental, um, this would be for their current Medicare open enrollment for a January 1st effective date. It would be for all non-Medicare retirees. So people who are not eligible for Medicare plan that we sponsor through the town, as well as the Medicare plans. So they would both have those options, as I mentioned before. It is very similar to our current Altus plan. So the people who would be moving from an active plan to a retiree plan wouldn't have much disruption of any kind moving to this. Next, for the Colonial Life benefits, uh, we wanted to add a suite of benefits to assist people with some of their out-of-pocket expenses. So we, with our broker, N F P, we kind of talked to a couple of different options. And some were okay and some were fine. But one that was kind of consistent across the board was Colonial Life. And our broker, um, has a lot of experience with them as well. So, um, it's something that she was comfortable with and, um, continuing and moving forward with Shrewsbury as well. So these would be effective in the fall for an October start date. That way we could capture all the new school employees and just so we're not putting all these things in at once. Give me a little time to roll each out at one time. Colonial will be on site to review all the plans and assist with the roads. They're going to be really hands-on with all the enrollment process. And the continuity of their team, um, they've had every employee that works on the team that'll be assisting us has been there for over 10 years. And that was one of the concerns that our consultant had with some of the other programs is that they kind of come in and out. So the first of these offerings would be accident insurance to help offset medical expenses. That can result from a fracture, dislocation, or any other covered injury. Just helped, designed to, uh, help you fill in some of the gaps caused by, um, your increasing deductibles, copayments, out-of-pocket expenses. Uh, can cover initial care costs, common bodily injuries, and events that require surgery and surgical care. Uh, the next is the critical illness insurance. So, uh, it supplements your major medical insurance by providing a lump sum benefit that can be used to pay for direct and indirect costs related to covered critical illness. Uh, if you're diagnosed with a covered critical illness, um, disease, surgery, cancer, or anything specified, the guaranteed issue is up to $35,000. And it includes those things on the PowerPoint. Uh, next is the hospital indemnity insurance. So it provides a lump sum benefit for covered hospital confinement and outpatient surgery. The guaranteed issue of this plan is $2,000, uh, for every hospital confinement. And then lastly, so we currently have life insurance through Boston Mutual. So we have a basic life insurance policy of $7,000, which is a renewable term life policy. We also have an optional life insurance policy, which is increments of $10,000 to a maximum of $500,000. And the guaranteed issue is up to $150,000. That's also renewable term life. It is portable, so if you left employment, you could take it with you. But the rates do increase when you leave because it goes from a group rate to an individual rate. Which I should have mentioned at the start that all of these plans are portable, um, and the rates would stay the same even if you left employment. So the two o- options that we have through Colonial are adding the term life insurance. So this would be a lower cost option, um, compared to the whole life. However, you'd pick, um, from one of the term options that they have, which is 10, 15, 20, or 30 years. You can also, you also have additional flexibility because you can purchase a standalone spouse policy. So if you don't want to purchase one, or you still have one with Boston Mutual and you don't want to, to, um, enroll in a new plan, you do have that option as well. Uh, the guar, the premiums are guaranteed, like I said, so they wouldn't increase over time, um, or if you left employment. And then lastly, we have the whole life insurance plan. So that does have a cash value. And there are two options, which are paid up at age 70 or paid up at age 100. I think that's all I have. So does anybody have any questions?
Board members, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I know that most of these are for all benefit eligible employees. So that includes the bargained employees as well, union employees? So roughly how many? It includes the school department as well? Okay. How many employees in total?
Total benefit eligible?
Uh, I'd say at most 2,000.
Of 2,000?
Mm-hmm.
And how are you administering this? So if someone makes an election and it's payroll deduction?
Yep. Correct.
So how do people go about enrolling in this?
Are you speaking about the Colonial specifically or any of them?
Let's say Colonial for now.
Okay. So Colonial will be, um, we have a representative and his team will assist with the enrollment. And then they'll send me the information to, uh, to the payroll deductions. So they manage everything and I manage the payroll deductions.
Go ahead.
Question. So for life insurance?
Yes.
Term life?
Yep.
Colonial Life's in addition to the other offering we have with Boston Mutual?
Correct.
And typically, what's the proof of insurability? So you said in Boston Mutual, it was 10,000 of incremental coverage?
Yep.
So what's usually the threshold for proof of insurability? Is it a multiple of their, uh, base or is it?
Um, it's up to 150,000.
Okay, so 150 without anything?
Correct.
And this?
It was, so at point of hire.
Yep.
And then if you have, if you want to enroll in further coverage, you'd have to complete evidence of insurability.
And then for spouses, a 25?
Um.
Without insurability? Okay. And then just one other question on face amount. So it seems a little counterintuitive to me if you try to monetize the, and it could be the same way with Boston Mutual, but between 51 and 60, I guess statistically, that's when people make it sick, right? Or more likely to get sick. So the face value falls quite a bit and then you can monetize what, up to 75% of that if you have a, an illness that's?
Yep. Correct. Yep.
Or whatever the, the test is. Is that the same in Boston Mutual? I'm just curious. Do you know?
Uh.
It seems, it, it drops down quite a bit and that's just statistically when you're more likely.
Sure. Of course. Yep. Uh, I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I can find that out.
No, no problem. It's just I was curious. All right. Thanks.
I just have one question. Does this make us competitive with other towns, surrounding towns? I know wanting to provide the benefits to our employees that make us attractive. We put a lot of investment into them.
It does, yes. And we had the assistance with, of our consultant from N F P to help us select from Colonial's suite of offerings to help us make us more competitive. So a lot of these, um, benefits that we've selected are offered by other communities. Some may offer some of them, some may offer all of them, but we strategically selected them to be more competitive.
Anything else?
Just, um, I think Mr. Haas may have mentioned this, but these are all 100% employee funded. So they are deducted through employees' payroll, but the town isn't contri- contributing to any of these. So, um, I just wanted to, to clarify that. The Insurance Advisory Committee met, uh, last week and voted to recommend, uh, accepting and adding the suite of benefits into, uh, our benefits package. And we would look for the board's consideration of that, uh, this evening as well.
I would just say that, um, I agree, these have become very standard. So I think it's great to add them to the available options for employees. I think that, um, I'll follow up with you after the fact and just share in my experience some best practices in terms of communication methods and, um, how to leverage the, um, revenue that your brokers will receive by these plans to make sure that you are getting, you know, something in return for that. And that can really contribute to, again, enhance communication to employees.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So if there's no more discussion, it's a pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve the supplemental benefits for fiscal year 24.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Thanks so much.
You turned me off by having to make the motion pass.
You did okay though.
Thank you.
Does he need to not do the next one also?
Correct.
I think so. Okay, so item number 10 is to review and act on the cost of living adjustment for retirees for fiscal year 2023. Go ahead.
Madam Vice Chair, uh, we have Chair of the Retirement Board, Mr. Tom Kennedy, a multi-term appointee of the Select Board, here to answer, uh, any questions this evening. This is a required vote of the Select Board for an additional 2% on top of the base call that went into effect for this fiscal year. And of course, um, as Mr. DiPaolo reminded me this evening, just to recognize, uh, Mr. Kennedy for his service, as he decided to step away from his position on the retirement board at the, in the next, in the coming months. So, uh, we appreciate your service, Tom. You got us to 100% funded. That's a huge milestone for this town that pays dividends day over day, year over year. So thank you for your service.
Mo, I think I, I thought you had a recuse, but you didn't.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So can you just kind of give a little background as to why we're doing this?
Maybe Mr. Kennedy?
That'd be great to have you come up, Tom.
Annually, um, there is a cost of living adjustment for the retirees. And what the, in the town, it covers the town employees with the exception of the teachers. Teachers are in the state plan. And, uh, generally, there's a 3% cost of living adjustment, uh, every effective July 1st. And that has to be voted on by the retirement board. And we did vote that back effective July 1, 2022. This particular year, uh, with the high inflation, the state legislature approved an additional 2%. They basically tied that a lot to Social Security. For 1123, uh, Social Security cost of living adjustment was 8.7%, which was quite a bit higher than normal. Usually it's in the 4%, 5% area. So the legislature, uh, voted the 2%. They, they voted that for the state employees and for the teachers. And then at the local level, for the 102 municipalities or regional systems, it has to be voted on initially by the retirement board. And then depending on the structure of the local government, uh, the, in Shrewsbury's case, it would be the Select Board that would approve that 2%. And it's just a one-time deal. I know in your letter there, you've got a couple, an example. And it's not 2% on everyone's pension. It's on the, uh, a maximum base of 14,000. So if someone's making less than that, they would get the 2% on their eight, eight or nine, $10,000. If someone is making more than 14, they only get the 2% on the 14,000. And, uh, and it's been approved about, uh, close to 70% of the municipalities have approved it as of, uh, last week. And there are a number of other municipalities like Shrewsbury that's, uh, representing it, uh, in the coming, tonight and in the coming weeks.
Okay. So when I look at your, at the memo that we have, it's saying that adding this additional 2% increase would result in $6,281.60 being added to the monthly retiree payroll.
That's about 6/10ths of 1% of our, uh, of our, uh, annual, our monthly payroll. And that is covered by the retirement board. There's no other town funds that are expended for this.
Any other questions from the board? All right. It's a pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve the 5% cost of living adjustment for retirees for fiscal year 23? All right?
It would be the additional 2%.
Sorry.
Yeah, we've already got.
5% in total. 3% plus the additional 2%. Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you.
Thank you all for all the support of the retirement system. As you know, we're one of the few systems in the state that's fully funded. And, uh, oh, you've been there for the 30 years of that. We know there are other priorities that easily could have been funded. But the town is in such a great shape with that. And I know it helps the bond rating and everything else with it. So it's, it's, it's great. The retirees, you know, have always been pushing us for all the benefits. And we have said, we want to really concentrate on getting this fully funded. And then, uh, we've raised our base from 12,000 to 14,000 recently. And we're one of the handful of systems that was still at 12,000. So now that we're fully funded, we're, uh, now it's our time to, uh, give back to the retirees. So again, thank you. And Mo, congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoyed working with you over the years.
You're gonna, you're gonna be moving, right?
Yes, yeah. Relocating to Connecticut to be closer to daughter and grandchildren.
There you go. You'll be busy.
Yes. I'm forward to it though.
Enjoying.
I will miss the time in, in Shrewsbury. So thank you all.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, are we ready for item 11? To review and act authorize a chair to sign the 2023 Green Communities application. Mr. Valdez, do you need to do anything with that or just?
I can answer questions if you have it.
No. This is just for the, um, apply for the grant, uh, for the portion that's available to the town, right?
Correct. So we're applying for $200,000 in green community funds for multiple projects.
Anybody have any questions? You've been successful with these in the past, right?
This will be my fourth, fourth application.
Good. Okay.
Just have one question. Is there like a Green Communities 2.0 coming? Or is there, what did I read? Is it the M V P program that's being upgraded?
Yes. So that's all part of Mass D O E Rs, uh, which is what Green Communities falls, falls under. So yeah, this is an M V P 2.0 grant that just came out last week.
But that's not this?
No. No.
Is that something that we will be?
It's a different, um, grant program and we are looking at it for climate action.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone who want to make a motion?
I move that we, um, authorize a chair to sign the 2023 Green Communities application.
Second.
Okay. We have motion and second. Any further discussion? If there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So voted. Item 12 is to review and act to lay out Glendale, Cypress, um, Glendale Ave, Cypress Ave, and Oak Metal Circle based upon the layout plan and sign the reports. Do you have anything? Is this just a vote?
It's, yeah, it's just the last step in the, um, street.
Yeah. Is this just a vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I can answer any questions if necessary.
So what are we doing? Just voting to lay it out?
Yes, and then we'll go to town meeting for their, uh, for the final vote.
Okay.
We just have to file the reports, which would be signed if approved with the town clerk at least seven days before town meeting.
Right. So, but, so what's the motion then?
To lay out Glendale Avenue, Cypress Ave, Oak Metal Circle, and sign the reports.
Okay. So I have, I have a motion to lay out Glendale Ave, Cypress Ave, Oak Metal Circle, based upon the layout plan and to sign the report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have motion and second. Any further discussion? If there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So voted. Okay. Item 13 is to review and act on the 2023 garage license renewal. Any questions on that?
Yep, we got, we received responses from all the. Garages in town and they filled out the application appropriately, so. Good for your review.
So before we approve these though, do we also know that these garages are complying with. Whatever else that we're asking them to do as far as the appearance of the, where cars are parked, or. That sort of thing, 'cause I know sometimes there's a little bit of an issue with how many cars are parked. In a, in a certain garage.
We'd have to have the police department go check them all.
But there aren't complaints that we know of. Okay, well, I guess that's merely what I'm asking, is just to make sure that we don't have any outstanding complaints that we need to think about. Okay, yeah, I know, I know that, but.
Every once in a while, we've asked. The police to go through all of them. And we've done it with the, but they're so busy that, but it takes them forever to get it done.
Of course, no, there's a lot. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion, there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Item fourteen is to review an act on the twenty-eight twenty-three, um, dealer of precious metals license renewal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted, item fifteen is to review an act on the one-day all alcohol license application. Of Musa, uh, Shum, Saint Mary's Syriac Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive, for a birthday party on Friday, May fifth. Twenty-twenty-three from seven PM to twelve AM.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion, there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Sixteen is to review an act on the one-day all alcohol license application of Musa Shum. Uh, Saint Mary, Saint Mary's Syriac Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive. For a wedding on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, from seven PM to twelve AM.
Move approval.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted, item seventeen is to review an act on the application of. Uh, Mika Davis, Spirit of Shrewsbury, for a one-day Carmen Vixia license for the Spirit of Shrewsbury Festival on September. Twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, from six AM to six PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion, there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so voted. Um, item eighteen, um. We can just skip over, that's the manager's responsibility, not ours, we don't need to act on that. Item nineteen is to review an act to appoint Kevin Mizuka, Town Manager, for a three-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-sixth.
Move approval. I just didn't know we were gonna talk first, I wasn't sure, so.
At least two seconds.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion, there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so voted. Item twenty is to review an act to, to appoint one member to the registrar of voters for three-year terms set to expire. On March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-sixth, um, we had a name submitted to us, um, Kathleen Cohane of Twenty-Nine Gleason Road.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Item twenty-one is to review an act. To designate the following positions as special municipal employees pursuant to National Law two sixty-eight A. Um, Office Assistant and Farmers Market Manager. Um, Mr. Mizuka.
Yeah, so this is a situation that has arisen where we have a, a part-time, uh, employee who, uh, works with us. Uh, in assistance of the Lake Quinn Sigamond Commission, uh, and, uh, who has applied, and we would like to make an offer to, to manage the farmer's market. Now that it's in-house, um, so of course, uh, municipal employees are prohibited from holding more than one paid position with the community. So, uh, we are able to, um, use the provisions in the state ethics law to designate the positions as special municipal employees. Uh, to, uh, offer this individual with a second part-time position for the farmer's market manager. So both positions need to be designated by the board this evening.
Alright. I move that we designate the following positions as special municipal employees pursuant to National Law two sixty-eight A. For Office Assistant and a Farmer's Market Manager.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion, there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Okay, that's it for action items, right, so, uh, we have lots of correspondence. Item twenty-two is an email dated April sixth, twenty-twenty-three, from Keith, Keith Elms, Animal Control Officer. Regarding the Animal Control Quarterly Warrant Return, so noted. Item twenty-three, um, stated April ninth, twenty-twenty-three, from Stephen Paul, Twenty-Six Francis Gardens Court. Regarding, um, historic New England Shrewsbury, um, it's regarding the Beal Project, so noted. Item twenty-four is an email dated April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, from Kerry Stockwell, Principal Department Assistant of the Health Department. Um, it's a forwarded report, um, the Shrewsbury COVID-nineteen vaccination update. Um, here's the highlights of it are, um, ninety, ninety-five percent of the, um, residents. Over fifty, um, have gotten the primary series of COVID shots. And sixty-nine percent, sixty-five and over have gotten the booster since September first. So noted, item twenty-five is an email dated April twelfth, from Robert Holland, Shrewsbury Scholarship Committee. Regarding town scholarships, um, scholarship committee gave out twenty-nine, five hundred dollar scholarships. They're based on a combination of financial need, character, community service, and academic standing. And, um, the awardees actually have to make it through the first, um, semester of college. Um, before they can, uh, receive the, um, before they can receive the scholarship, so. Congratulations, that's the most I ever, I ever remember the, the committee giving out, so. Must have had a good year with donations. Um, item twenty-six is an email dated April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, from Lynn Tzazewski, First Congregational Church. Um, regarding busing of the animals event on June third on Town Common from twelve to three, it's gonna be busing of the animals. Um, it's gonna be some pet vendors, ice cream, and pony rides, so. Item twenty-seven is an email dated April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, from Emily Lawson. Administrative Assistant, Office of the Building Inspector, and Planning and Economic Development Department. Um, regarding the Community Preservation Plan, um, the community. Uh, the letter is on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, um, they're requesting, um, um, time. They're requesting to be scheduled to meet with the board to get input on, um, the. Board's thoughts on needs related to the various CPA categories, so. Um, if somebody can get in touch with them and schedule a time. Um, so noted, item twenty-eight is a letter received April nineteenth from Gosha. Uh, Stalaska, Solid Waste Recycling Program Manager, regarding Castola Yard Waste. Performance, um, the first week of the program, they collected sixty-five point seventy-eight tons of yard waste. And there was only one complaint regarding a missed collection. Item, item twenty-nine is a ZVA decision of March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-three, from. Rosa Soto for a special permit for property located at Ten Pond Avenue, so noted. Item thirty is a ZVA decision of March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. For Patrick Byrne for a variance for property located at thirty-seven Old Brook Road. I believe that is all we have on the agenda, so is there anything else to come, we will abort on open session? There being none, then I will wish you all well, and this will be. My last request for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Again, we have motion second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. This motion is adjourned, good evening.